All right, we're going to get started here. Good evening, everybody. I'm Kim Casco and am President and CEO of the Iowa City Area Chamber of Commerce. Welcome to our Iowa City City Council Candidate Forum. That's a mouthful to say. We want to thank all of you, first and foremost, for being here tonight and engaging in the community by coming here and listening to these candidates. And also thank the candidates for running for office and for being here tonight as well. And lastly, I also want to thank the City of Iowa City for hosting us here tonight. So, the mission of the chamber is to foster a better business environment. So many of our questions tonight will be business-focused, but there will be a piece where we open it up to the audience. We've passed out index cards and pencils, so be jotting those down as we go through, and then we'll make sure to have time for those. And I think we can get started. I'm going to turn this over to Ryan Semph, who's our Director of Government Affairs and Public Policy. He's going to moderate tonight, when I'm going to do my best to keep track of time.
Thank you, Kim. All right, so first off, I again want to reiterate, thank you Iowa City for giving us your space and your staff for the night. Thank you. We really appreciate it. And I also like to thank the Cedar Rapids Iowa City Building Trades Council for being our public policy program sponsor. So, thank you to them as well. We couldn't do this without them, so. Before we get into everything, I just want to describe the format. So, we're going to do two-minute opening and closing statements with two-minute answering times for every candidate for every question. So, every candidate gets to answer each question. The first few questions, as Kim said, are going to be from the chamber, and then the remainder, we're going to take from the audience. So, if you haven't grabbed a note card and a pencil from the back yet, make sure you get back there and grab them. We'll stop at some point and pick up your note cards, and then we'll get on with it. But from that, I think we're just going to get going. So, for opening statements, we're going to start with Maza here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mazaar Saleh. I'm running for Atlark City Councils. I'm running because I have the education and experience and proven ability to bring people together from diverse backgrounds to string our community. I came to this country in 1997 with a civil engineering degree. However, like many immigrants, I have to start over. I learn quickly, and I am not afraid of challenge. I learned English, earned my citizenship, and completed an early childhood development, and recently, I graduated from Kirkwood Community College as a medical technician. My educational background prepared me for quickly process technical information which has served me well in understanding city policies and report. I have extensive experience engaging local government and community issues. The -- no, I don't like those. As a leader of the Sudanese community and Center for Worker Justice and Black Voice Project, I brought people from different backgrounds, low-wage workers and residents of this community who are typically disconnected from discussion of policies. Bring them together to create ideas and solutions, made elected officials and business leaders to create solution. I have met with local business owner as a board member of the downtown district, and I have served as two years in two commissions in the city, a community review board and Iowa City Manager Roundtable. My three issues is affordable housing, economic development for all, and transportation. Thank you.
Thanks, Maza here. Angela?
Hi, everyone. I'm Angela Winnicky. I grew up the majority of my life in Iowa City. I truly believe that anyone who is passionate about serving our community should have the opportunity to do so. A very big part of my success as a young person growing up in Iowa City is due to how much this community helped raise me, which is what has driven my passion for serving our community. The hours spent in Iowa City Public Library, hours spent hanging out downtown with my friends because of the safe community we lived in, and the endless number of Friday night concerts that I've attended with my family, and many of the opportunities I had afforded to me to be a scholarship student in elementary school and junior high, and then at Iowa, that this community provided me are part of what has helped make me successful. As a young adult, I've worked for a locally-owned business for the past 10 years, which has taught me a lot about organizing and creating operational procedures for young people. And for the past three years, I've been involved with the Iowa City Downtown District, first on the marketing board, then as the chairperson through the Washington Street Project, and then on the Board of Directors. And then in this past six months, I have served as the nighttime mayor for the downtown district in creating safer and welcoming downtown community for everyone. I believe that anyone in our community should be able to serve on city council, and that we can learn and grow in our position. So, thanks.
Thank you, Angela. Kingsley?
I will say, you messed me up with no hand clap after everybody's opening statement, but whatever. So, I want to thank the chamber, the downtown district, HBA, if you're in the audience as well, and just everyone out here, and who may be listening if this is video recorded. You know, I want to tell a quick story. I know I'm, you know, short on time. One of the things I get a chance to do, I'm not aware of where you're from here, I'm originally from South Carolina, I came up to law school about 10 years ago. I get a chance to go home sometimes, and one of the places that has seen some unprecedented growth is Greenville, South Carolina. If you get a chance, it's a beautiful city to visit and see. When you look at the areas around Greenville, you see some of the unprecedented growth, but you also see some of the dilapidated areas around there. You know, even thinking about this particular format, I was just thinking, we are in a relatively great standpoint with the growth that we're seeing across the community, and that should be exciting. That should be something that we, you know, hold as something that we can get really behind. However, you know, I want to be smart with that growth. I want to, you know, really focus on what that growth looks like, not only with having a strong downtown, because I think that's important, and I will say that's something that I didn't know was important four years ago, a strong downtown, but also a strong economically-developed community across the board. So, my issues many of you have in those pamphlets in front of you are affordable housing, you know, looking at economic development throughout the community, and also looking at mental health and becoming a leader in mental health. However, the one thing that I do really like from not only the people that I've worked with the chamber, but also would have worked with the downtown district and other individuals here, is that the issues that I bring up, when I speak about those three issues, aren't issues in a vacuum. They're issues that each of those organizations have either put apart or have added as far as their legislative priorities, or added as far as things that they are looking for for the new year. And so, I'm excited about my campaign, you know, bringing that to the forefront and moving forward. And so, if you vote for me, I think that's something that I will continue to work on and bring that hard work ethic to really balance the issues and provide great leadership. Thank you.
Thanks, Kingsley. Ryan?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. I want to shout out to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event and making our local politics a little more accessible for all people. So, my name is Ryan Hall. I'm originally from the Detroit, Michigan area. I moved to Iowa City for my education, and I intentionally moved to this community because of its vibrancy, its possibility. And I really see that potential when I'm meeting people in the community and learning about how we can move together as a community. So, I moved to Iowa last year to pursue a green energy job, to where I was serving in Green Iowa AmeriCorps, which Iowa City now hosts a team, doing home energy efficiency improvements for lower-income households. And for me, I am an advocate for social justice, for climate justice, for racial justice, economic justice, and I think that achieving this in our community doesn't need to ostracize or alienate different groups in our community, but we can really bring all folks together. And a perfect example of that is Forest View, with the tenants' associations, with the developers, with the city, all partnering together to make sure that we achieve this sort of equitable future for all people. And so, I'm encouraged by this type of growth, and I want to see that continue. So, I want Iowa City to be a leader in what is to become of our economy, so that we are ready to absorb a green and clean energy job future, to where we are incubating innovative local businesses that are homegrown, where we are training and educating those to install solar panels, to work on efficiency, to create green spaces that retain water, to alleviate stress on our stormwater systems. And I think that Iowa City can be on the cutting edge and bring in great talent, businesses, and minds to this community, and I'd really love to expand on existing partnerships and relationships I've made in my time here. And I'm really grateful for this opportunity to potentially serve as your next city council member. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Susan?
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Thank you for the chamber for hosting. I've been a longtime resident of Iowa City and fully intend to stay here for the rest of my life. And in that, I care deeply about this community, and I've cared deeply about it for a long time. In 1996 to 99, I served on the Iowa City Community School Board, was president of the school board the last year I was on it, and was involved in hiring a new superintendent at that point in time. That was just one of many public service organizations that I've been involved with over that time, from leadership program at the Chamber of Commerce, to athletic associations with the school district, to now the last eight years on the city council. In doing those things, in many of those, I've held leadership positions, I've been involved in setting policy, have been able to, with my educational background in engineering, analyze large and complex sets of data, and work with people to come up with good solutions. Those are things that I enjoy doing, I think I'm good at doing. I enjoy sitting down and conversing with people, listening to people, hearing their issues, talking about how we can solve these problems. One of the things I'm most involved in right now, and really hope to stay involved with, is working on an access center for this community. This is bringing together nonprofits, the university, the municipalities, the county, to build a place where we can take people who are in crisis, rather than taking them to jail or taking them to the emergency room. This is a very large, very complex project that we've made a lot of progress on, and one that I would certainly hope to continue to be involved in. I've served as the Chair of the Economic Development Committee for the council for a number of years, and in that role, take it very seriously as we look at how do we do economic development? How do we increase our tax base? How do we increase our property tax revenues? Because all the things that everybody here will talk about, and I will talk about, and I agree with, from whether it's social justice, whether it's environmental issues, we have to have the money to support those things. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So, we're going to start with the first question with Angela. And that question is, "Transit has been a longstanding issue for employers and employees in the region. What would you do to improve Iowa City's transit system and to improve coordination of this system between other regional governments?"
I know that everyone hasn't been at every forum, but we've talked about the transportation issues facing our community a lot. And I think most importantly, we need to make sure that all the various transit systems coordinate and work together. I know that they all face various modes of funding, but I think if the university, the City of Corvill County, and Iowa City can coordinate the needs in expanding our transportation routes, as well as addressing the lack of transportation during late-night hours and weekend hours, so that early-wage workers can get to work and -- sorry -- and help accommodate kind of the outreach neighborhoods that don't have transportation currently, because we haven't done the research to expand our transportation system, which I know from past conversations, that the city is working on getting a study, or doing a study next year, and seeing what the needs are in our community, but in helping get, and also in helping get city, or community input, sorry, community input during that study to see what the needs are that the people are demanding.
Thank you. Kingsley?
Thank you. You know, about five years ago, I got a call from Mayor Hayek. I was driving actually on, I think Mormon Trek and Highway 1, and he had basically called me to say that I was going to be Chair for the Ad Hoc Diversity Committee. And one of those charges was looking at transportation and also police, and focusing on those particular issues. From that committee, we talked about doing a survey and really trying to find the data around that particular survey. And so, again, with all the strategic planning priorities we had, I mean, some of the things got shifted, and so making sure that becomes a priority this upcoming year in our strategic planning process is very important. One of the other things I think about is looking at it from, also as far as ideas and initiatives we could look at in different cities, and look at it from a hybrid model, you know, how can we, you know, have express routes that run throughout the city to ensure that we have transportation, not only at the nighttime, but also during the weekends as well? We need to work with businesses, we need to talk to people, find out what the needs are from that data standpoint as well, get some of that anecdotal and data so that can inform some of our decisions moving forward. And one of the things I also, we have a council that's talked about, is making this more of a comprehensive transportation plan, not necessarily just focusing on transportation, maybe bus transportation, but also focusing on what that means from a walkability standpoint, what does that mean from a car or vehicle standpoint as well, what does that mean from a bicycle standpoint? And so, you know, it's important that we get those data points to make sure that we're moving forward in that particular way, but, you know, I want to make sure that we think about it holistically and comprehensively as well, to ensure that we're thinking about all those modalities of transportation.
Thank you. Ryan?
Transportation is something very near and dear to my heart. I have not owned a vehicle in about five years, and I get around by bicycle, which was most recently stolen. So, I'm without my primary means of transportation, so I know what it's like for folks to require that there be more than just access to automobiles and that sort of infrastructure. So, I think that moving forward, I think the city needs to implement in their strategic plan that they will collaborate with local and regional partners to really make sure that our transit organizations are not operating in silos, because if you look at Story County and Ames, they've consolidated their transit organizations, and I think it's past time that Johnson County and this area has collaborated in a very serious way with partners in our region to implement a very similar structure. And I think beyond our region, we should be advocating and lobbying for high-speed rail. And I think that that's something that is coming down the pipe, and that we should be ready to embrace. In addition to these modes of transportation, I want to expand on walkable infrastructure, bikeable infrastructure, and that means trying to make spaces in our communities that are sort of more walkable. So, I know that the city is looking at a transportation study, and I know that it might tell us some results that we already know. We need buses on Sundays. We need buses for second-shift workers. And I think that I would like to explore an option to where we are doing a trial run for Sundays to see if it's economically viable. And I think with the demand that we have heard of, I think that it will be. And so, it's worth trying out, and I would support the plan. I'd also support experimenting to try to make sure that we're implementing these solutions as soon as possible, because for folks in our community, it's not enough to just plan and talk in circles for a long time. They need to get to work now. So, I'd be willing to engage in more of those solutions. So, thank you.
Thanks. Susan?
Thank you. When we were putting forth some of our priorities for the new budget session, one of the things that I mentioned at that point in time was making sure that, in fact, we did get the plan started and the review started of our transit system. It's been a little bit on hold, and part of that has been changes in personnel. So, that will be coming up hopefully shortly after the first of the year. We will be waiting until we get a new person in charge of transit, which I do believe makes sense. Currently, what Iowa City has done, our philosophy has been to run routes across the entire city, to make sure everybody had a bus route relatively close to where they lived. What this means is, when you look at the budgets, that the routes don't necessarily run real frequently. Other cities tend to run fixed routes that go towards those areas which have the most need, the most ridership, but then you have parts of the city that are not covered at all. So, we need to analyze what the demand is in the city, both looking at those different kinds of routes, I think input from people who currently use it, or would use it if it was more readily available, from our employers, whose employees tend to use transit a lot as well. We need to come up with creative solutions. I think when we look at Sundays, late nights, and some of those, we may or may not be able to, and our first blush has been that we can't afford to necessarily run a lot of fixed routes at those times, because the demand is not great enough. But I think with creative solutions such as van pools, maybe vouchers for taxi services, there's ways to provide those services, and I think getting the employers who are involved in those late-night shifts or Sunday workers would be an asset as well. But certainly, we need to get the community input and input from the employers as we look at revamping this, so that we can give the best service possible, particularly to those who don't have other alternatives.
Thanks. Maza here?
Yeah, I have been talking to everyone in the community, ranging from students to older people to low-wage workers, even to the people who run Iowa City transportation system, because this is one of my main issues. We need really to upgrade our transportation system and make it available in many areas. We need to make sure, make it possible for more people to go more places at more time. And while we're doing that, we need to make sure the passengers are not staying on the route for a long time. Acting Transportation Director, when I met with him, Mark Rommel, he told me that there is a road study will be conducted next year. I guess this is really an important step to try to solve this challenge. But we have to make sure during this time, we have to bring a lot of people to the table of discussion. We have to bring riders, we have to bring students, we have to bring the people who run the transportation themselves, we have to bring businesses, because this is really important for businesses as well, and to bring expert people. And just bringing people, that's my area of experience. I've been doing this as a community of organizers, being, bringing people together for the past several years. And it seems we can do this, because this is really important for a lot of people in this community. As a city council member, I will support this study, and I will make it priority, I will make the entire issues priority for Iowa City. Thank you.
Thanks. This next question is going to start with Kingsley. "What are your thoughts on the role of economic development incentives such as TIF and workforce housing tax credits in continuing the growth of Iowa City? Would you support continued use of these incentives to further spur growth in the region?"
I think the simple answer to that is yes. I think the more complicated answer, as I kind of opened up and as far as talking about growth, is I see TIF and other economic development incentives as a tool that has to be used wisely and smartly to get the objectives that we want to see from each individual property, each individual initiative. I think for me especially, I think about, and this is currently how I deliberate on these issues, is, you know, I look at the gap that is provided by the NDS, and I look at the balance from a community aspect that we are getting with this particular TIF, whether it be additional sustainability initiatives, solar panels, waste management efforts, whether it's affordable housing, which is 15%, or that inclusionary zoning that we see in the Riverfront Crossing District when we have city funding. It's an important balancing test. Sorry, I'm trying to take over the mic right now. It's an important balancing test, I think, that frankly, we have to do a better job about. But I also think we need to make our intentions clear, and that's something that I've mentioned in council a couple of different times, as far as exactly what we as a council want to see. We're representatives of the community. We need to, you know, show the business community especially exactly what we're talking about, but using our inroads and using our communication to reach out to all the community to really kind of get a clear message as far as what we see from a development perspective. I've heard from many people on this issue, many of the issues have talked about, we need to go as high as possible, which I'm not necessarily for, or we need to look at, you know, no growth, we need to look at median growth. I think for me, especially living from different communities and coming from different areas, there's a healthy balance that we can achieve in the middle, and I'm really committed to working towards that and ensuring that, again, with that balancing test, when we give those incentives, economic development incentives, whether they be workforce tax, taxing credits, or TIF financing as well, we do so with balancing all those other community objectives.
Thanks. Ryan?
I would just like to echo what Kingsley had said about maintaining this balance, because I think it's really important that we're bringing all stakeholders to the decision-making table. And especially when it comes to TIF, I'm encouraged by this sort of transition from the front-end TIFs, where we are providing some equity at the city level, to more of a back-end sort of use of TIF, because that makes us more fiscally sound, more responsible, and puts us less at risk if anything were to happen with projects that we are incentivizing. I think because we are wanting to move more towards a sustainable and equitable community, we have to be sure that our TIF policy reflects those values. And so, as someone who wants to incentivize more sustainable development, I would want to work more closely with developers to sort of encourage, with our city policies, more renewable energy implementation, more efficiency, where we are providing the tools and the resources for development to look more like a net-zero kind of housing, kind of building. So, I think, and each project is something I will review one by one. It's a unique usage of TIF in every instance, but I want to be really smart about how we are utilizing either future revenue potential for the city or equity at our level, how we're utilizing that in a smart and effective way that is good for all people in the community, whether that's the business community, whether that's the residents, whether it's students, whether it's the university. I want to make sure that our city incentives are benefiting the whole and not just a few. And, you know, this is about, you know, also trying to leverage other sources of funding, like the federal tax credits, to provide for more housing, because folks that I've spoken with, with Housing Fellowship and Affordable Housing Coalition, say, "We really need those federal funds to make this development possible."
Thanks. Susan?
You mentioned two very different incentives here, and I'm going to address them a little bit separately. The workforce housing tax credits, at this point, I cannot envision a circumstance in which I would probably not agree that we should use those. That is an incredibly small investment by the city. It's $1,000 per residential unit to enable the developer to apply for those workforce housing tax credits. What that means is that they have to build residential units that cost them $200,000 or less to build. Now, there are no limitations on who can live in those, but as we know, in this community with our problem with affordable housing, there's a certain aspect of it that is also supply and demand. So, the more that we can get units built that are $200,000 or less, there is more opportunity for lower-cost rents and/or purchase prices. So, I think that's an incredible return on our dollar for the city to put up the $1,000 per unit, so that developers can apply for that workforce housing tax credit. On the TIF side, we use, in Iowa City, we have used for quite some time, I think, a very conservative approach to this. We use an outside third-party who does the gap analysis. In other words, how much money does the developer need to make this thing go, so that they can still have a reasonable rate of return, not being unduly enriched, but a reasonable rate of return? And in general, I have supported those that have come back to us from NDS and what we're getting out of those. I think there's a combination of looking at public benefits, as we have talked about, but there's also the fact, at the very most basic level, that this is an investment for a future cash flow for the city. And as we look at the rebates from the state going away, the backfill going away, and property taxes limited from the state, we have to look at how we can increase our revenue stream, and that is one way, is through investing in buildings and properties that will give us a much larger property tax revenue in the future.
Thanks, Susan. Maza here?
I think the city needs to use all the tools in their tools, books, including TIF. You know, including TIF to influence and shape, you know, our city in a way that, you know, the city development in a way that it will benefit everyone in this community. I understand there is a long-term benefit when, by forgiving, I mean, I understand there is like long-term benefit for the tax road, city tax road, by forgiving this benefit for the first decade or two. But I also think, when we're using tax buyer fund, we need to make sure the city-funded project are promoting important goal in different area, which is affordable housing and green building standards, and also like quality job on the construction building. You know, this kind of expectation, it will create a win-win for everyone involved. And as a city council, I will support this kind of expectation when we use. And as a city council, I will support this kind of expectation when we're using taxpayer fund. Thank you.
Thanks, Mazza here. Angela?
I do believe that we need to continue supporting the economic development incentives such as TIF and workforce housing credits. I think that our city already has other grants and microloan programs to also help with the development of small businesses in our community. And I think as we continue forward in supporting the growth in our community to help increase our tax base, that as a community, we're responsible in helping support the development, sorry, to support the development of various housing developments, affordable housing developments, and small businesses in our community.
So, I just want to make sure everyone is remembering to write questions down after this next question. We're going to come around and collect, so just keep that in mind and make sure you're getting something ready. This next question is going to start with Ryan. Affordable housing continues to be a hot-button issue in Johnson County. Access to affordable housing is important to the business community because it contributes to the quality of life for employees and their families, and helps attract and retain the best workers. How will you work to address the affordable housing crisis in Johnson County?
So, affordable housing is something getting spoken about by many of us up here. I think all of us are mentioning affordable housing, and it is really a hard issue to find a silver bullet for. That's why I think we need a multifaceted approach to really tackle this. So, the most cost-burdened residents in our community are young people, are students, and are most elderly populations. And they are paying 30, 40, 50% of their incomes just to put a roof over their head. And if we are really to make progress on this issue, because I know it's something we've spoken about for a long time in this community, I think we really need to be innovative, but also stick to the 15-step plan that has been drawn out by Iowa City, by the city itself. And so, I'm encouraged by growth like the cohousing unit on the west side. It's 36 units that will try and target a more affordable market, and I think that moving more towards a cooperative model for housing would be a really innovative way to have higher density in existing buildings and trying to really make use of our existing structures. So, I am currently the president of River City Housing Collective, a cooperative housing organization, and I want to offer the cooperative model as a new and innovative way to address housing. I also want to really be conscious of the folks who have been working tirelessly around this issue, whether that's the Affordable Housing Coalition, the Housing Fellowship, and there are many folks in this community that are very knowledgeable about this issue, and I want to tap them and make sure that their voices and their solutions are being heard by all on city council. And so, one thing I'm really interested in is the land trust that the city could really develop to, because access to land for developers is really the crucial issue. And so, if we can utilize a land trust to provide more access to affordable housing, then I think that's a great and innovative way.
Thanks, Ryan. Susan?
As Ryan mentioned, the city council has approved a 15-point affordable housing plan. A number of the items on that have already been completed, and we're working to complete more of those over the next year or so. Some of the things that have already been done, when we developed the form-based code for Riverfront Crossings, one of the outgrowths of that was requiring 10% affordable housing in Riverfront Crossings. Basically, with that new zoning, the form-based code, what it did was basically an upzoning. It allowed more density in that area. And in exchange for giving that increased density, what we've said to developers is you need to include at least 10% affordable housing in any developments down there. Our TIF policy requires 15% affordable housing in any residential developments. When we sold the Court &amp; Lynn property, that created about $1 million that we have put towards affordable housing, and starting in fiscal year 2018, we have put $650,000 annually, at least at this point, into our budget to go towards affordable housing. Fortunately, we have some excellent partners in the community, such as the Housing Fellowship, Johnson County Affordable Housing Trust, that can take that money. They've got great staff, they've been doing this for years, they do it very efficiently, and it's great for the city to be able to turn that money over to them and allow them to use it in their projects. Another thing that we're looking at is expanding the use of form-based code throughout different areas of the city. The next one that we're really looking at is on the south side near Alexander School, and also the north side here near the campus. What this will allow is different kinds of housing built in the same area that could very well be at different price points, from single-family homes to duplexes to more multi-family units. So, you get different price points, you don't get the socioeconomic segregation that we tend to have now in a lot of our communities, and also the idea that we would have more affordable housing within those, with that increased density. Another issue we're looking at is the balance of rental versus owner-occupied. That's really crucial close to campus. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Mazza here?
I believe we need to upgrade our approach in the way that we're doing affordable housing for the very low-income families. You know, the creation of Forest VU, of relocation plan, is really setting a model, new model, that we can use for many setting. If this relocation plan is fully implemented, the resident of Forest VU will have an access to new, better houses than what they have currently. I guess this is not happening just like that. It just happened because we brought people together. We brought the tenant and the developer in one table through a series of many meetings, vibration from everyone. And I guess from here, I really want to thank the Forest VU residents, the developer willingness to negotiate the issues. And then the tenants themselves, who came to many meetings to know their rights, and discuss their concern, and negotiate the solutions, and like identify their goals and negotiate the solution with the developer. This is really kind of a win-win project, where the developer will benefit and the resident will benefit. And I want to really, I'm encouraged by that, and I'm proud to be working with them. I would like to take this model and implement it somewhere else in the city where both people will benefit. And the Iowa City Housing Action Plan is a very good step to move forward, but we can still create, we can still make a creative solution where everyone will benefit. Thank you.
Thanks. Angela?
I think that addressing the affordable housing issue in Iowa City is kind of a twofold issue or concern, sorry, that we must continue to incentivize our developments, like we currently do with, sorry, with the, geez. I get really nervous when I'm in front of everyone, sorry. I think we need to address affordable housing in two different ways, continuing to incentivize developments and encouraging, I'm going to freeze up, sorry. Just going to read directly from what I've written, sorry. Can I just skip to Kingsley and come back? Sorry.
Kingsley?
So, a wealth of information is being discussed, and I think that, you know, many of you have got my flyers and everything else. If you want to shoot me an email, give me a call, we can talk about those different initiatives. We have a 15-point plan. We've really worked on this. We need to focus on this as a crisis, though. You know, I ran on this four years ago, and, you know, I'll be honest with you, our community wasn't as receptive as it is now. I was told that I shouldn't be running on it, it's too big of an issue, and I'm really excited that council not only took that as a priority, but also city staff stepped up in a huge way, different various groups stepped up in a hu, different various, different or various groups stepped up in a huge way to really come around what inclusionary zoning could look like in the Riverfront Crossings District. So, I want to give them a huge kudos, because I think that we, frankly, up here are the talking heads in a sense, but they're actually doing the work and making sure that it gets done from that standpoint. You know, I'll be frank, you know, I think we can continue with the plan. I think that it's a good plan, it took a lot of time and effort to put this plan together. But I also think that there's always an opportunity to look at what other communities are doing, how we can incentivize, you know, rent-to-own possibilities or other types of different possibilities that I think are amazing and have worked in other places similar to Iowa City. One of the things that I have talked about through other campaign is accelerating the timetable, because I do see it as a crisis, and I do think it's something that we need to spend a little more attention to. It's an important issue, I can talk for hours about it. But again, you know, this is, one of the key things that I think has been, I think, influential for me, being able to travel and go and see different parts of the country, is knowing that communities are all across the country facing this enormous issue. We can leverage their expertise, we can leverage what they have learned, to really see what we can do in different ways, and I think we can do that, and I think that we have done that, and I think we can continue to do that as we move forward, make sure the community is aware, make sure the community is engaged, and move forward in a way that we can make affordable housing available to everyone.
Thanks.
Okay, sorry. I think as we face the issue of affordable housing in Iowa City, that this stems largely in part from just a shortage of housing. I think we need to create a higher supply of housing. In order to do so, we have to allow for denser development in our city center. That does mean taller buildings, and that doesn't mean that every building has to be 14 stories, but that we should allow for more growth upward, and that we need to create unique multi-unit housing options in our surrounding neighborhoods as we redevelop them and as we develop in the south side district. I think we have a really great example of a neighborhood in Iowa City, not its price point, but in the type of development, and that is the peninsula. I think the peninsula is a little higher price point than most people can afford. But if we took a model like that, where there are some single-family homes, as well as duplexes, townhomes, and then multiplex units, all within one neighborhood, and create something like that, along with incentivizing more affordable units within those developments as we develop the south side and as we redevelop neighborhoods near downtown, that that is one great way of creating density in our community and addressing, increasing the number of homes available. And then also, I think Susan and Kingsley touched on this, but really looking at as an entire community, a better balance of rentals versus homes, sorry, for purchase. Thanks.
Thanks. So, like I said, we're going to take a moment here to collect any questions that anyone has, and I think our communications director is going to pick them up. So, if you just want to pass them to the middle, it'd be great. This next one's coming to you, Susan. Then we're going to ask one more question from the chamber, so I have time to sort out all these questions.
All right.
The general business environment in Johnson County will always be a key issue in mind for the Iowa City Area Chamber of Commerce. How would you work to ensure business continues to have a seat at the table and regulation is well thought out and places minimal burden on our community's small business owners?
I think whenever we're looking at regulation, we have to make sure that we take that extra time and effort to bring those people to the table, literally. You said, talk about a seat at the table, but literally, to bring those people to the table, have those informal meetings, use organizations like the Chamber, any other small business groups that there might be for people who want to sit down, talk about, you know, what we're looking at. I think one of the great things that we did just recently, and this was in conjunction with the downtown district, was the new co-sign program. We totally revamped the sign regulations for the city, and this has really helped in terms of downtown. We also did get some funding for that. So, I think you have to make sure that we are open, and I think we've seen the city really improve in that in the last five years, in terms of being very accessible to people, whether it's the business community or others, to come in and sit down and talk about issues before we get too far down the road with what those plans might be. We've done a lot in terms of working with businesses on facades, you know, what would it take for them to do some redevelopment with their building? And sometimes it's just the front, so we've done these facade grants. But before we've done those, we've sat down with people in the business community and said, okay, these are some ideas we have, how do you see that working? We've done microloans to small businesses, either to help them get started or keep them sustainable. And again, lots of times, it's been having those round tables with people and saying, okay, these are programs we're looking at, these are the things we think we can do, we might have restrictions if it's state or federal money, how do you see it working? And so, I think we have to make sure that we keep those people at the table so that we have an idea what those regulations are actually going to mean in a very practical sense, that we have the ones that we need for the community in general, but we're not being overly burdensome to those businesses.
Thanks, Susan. Mazza here?
I guess that's the theme of my campaign, a seat at the table for everyone. I am deeply committed to bring all voice, including business owner, to the table of local making decision. My record is clear, I have lived by this principle, although maybe the business owner or business leader was not officially among the community that I have been served during the recent years, but I have made a point of meeting with business leaders, hearing their views, and finding common ground. I have served on a board of Iowa City Downtown District, and I have talked one-to-one to over 100 business owner to find, talking about the local wage standard in this community. I have participated in a meeting with represented from downtown district, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Iowa City Coroville Convention and Visitor Bureau. I have facilitated meeting between the employers and workers to solve a complaint. As a member of the city council, I would represent all member of this community, including businesses, and I will seek regular meeting with business leader and their organization. Thank you.
Thanks. Angela?
Having worked for a small business downtown for the last 10 years, I've kind of felt the impact of various regulations that have either been imposed or changed in our community. And though I support and in favor of higher living wages and sustainable alternatives, and our successful now unified waste system downtown, I believe it is important to involve business owners in all the decisions that are made in our community, and we have really great resources to reach out to them with the downtown district, the Chamber, the CVB, and ICAD, to bring the right people to the table, I think, as we're all seeing that, as we discuss changes for our business community. I think it's really important to have someone on city council that understands how businesses, and especially a small local business, works and how it's impacted by the decisions that our community makes, which I think would be a unique position that I would bring to city council. And I do understand the ins and outs and the needs of small to medium-sized businesses, and have the ability to communicate not only to city leadership, but also to the small businesses in our community.
Thanks. Kingsley?
We need to use the current systems in place. We have the Chamber, we have the downtown district. I think these are people we can always leverage and have, you know, discussions with them, and many of them have those seats at the table in various perspectives and groups. You know, as I was hearing everybody talk about, I was just thinking about, you know, small business ownership and what that means, and my grandfather used to own a concrete business back in Pendleton, South Carolina, and it's tough to be a small business owner. And again, I was young at the time, and so I'm not saying I have any insight to the pain that he and struggle he went through, but I think that we have to really have a conversation and ensure there's multiple business representation when we're talking about bringing people to the table, because I know that there are some business owners that are struggling right now, I know there's some business owners that are doing well.
I know there's some business owners that are doing well. And, you know, I want to make sure that we're being representative in our discourse and our conversation when it comes to downtown and when it comes to, you know, business owners throughout the Iowa City community. I was thinking about, when I ran four years ago, again, I started to think so much about, you know, why everybody's talking, but it was just something I was thinking about. I ran on connected community and, you know, I don't necessarily know if I did that really well. You know, when you think about connecting a community, it has to come with a plan and you have to plan for that communication. You have to plan with how you're going to represent those different groups. You have to ask those questions ahead of time, not wait till later and hopefully they come, you know, to a city council meeting and talk to you or have those conversations with you. And so one of the things that I've been focused on, especially if you elect me, is really focusing on, you know, making sure we have those conversations, not only from a strategic planning priority standpoint, but what is the plan? What is the plan to ensure that we're incorporating those different voices at the table at the onset, not necessarily waiting when we have an initiative or something on the council docket that we need to solicit that feedback? I'm one of the few council members, I think, that, you know, is not necessarily as connected, but, you know, really spends a lot of time focusing on a lot of different things. I messed myself up because I was going to talk about another point, but I think we need to sit down and really represent and talk to groups from different respective areas. Thank you.
Thanks, Kingsley. Ryan?
I'd love to really keep the channels of communication open, whether it's with small businesses, whether it's with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Downtown District. I'd be more than happy to meet with folks like Nancy Bird of the ICDD to really understand the needs of businesses in our community. And I think we have some great examples of what really small, local, homegrown businesses look like. For instance, on my block, there's a business run out of someone's home called Urban Greens and they grow produce in their yard and in their house. And it's wonderful to see this sort of innovation happen right at someone's home. And if we're really talking about, you know, addressing food insecurity, about small business growth, we should be looking at these examples and thinking how neat this is to see these businesses pop up in our neighborhoods. There are also great models like cooperative business model at the Iowa City Press Co-op and the Space for Public Space One. And this is a great incubator space for creative design, for perhaps someone to get off the ground for their business. And the same thing is happening at Merge down on the Ped Mall, too. We're creating these spaces and need to continue to support them in order to incubate locally owned, homegrown, small businesses that are far more likely to support union labor, for better wages and really respect the needs of the workers. And, you know, I think we have a really strong business community when we really have a strong employee community and that we're standing up for workers because they are the core of this community. And I think that, you know, with most things here spoken about, the key is balance. But we need to maintain open channels of communication and make sure that all voices are heard. And I'd be happy to be listening to all stakeholders and try to promote a really healthy, vibrant local business economy.
Thanks, Ryan. We're going to start with Maza here for this next one. It comes from the audience. The Iowa City Director of Finance estimated the change in how apartments are taxed will cost the city $50 million over 10 years. The state is backing out on their promise to backfill the city for the property tax changes back in 2013. Share with us three strategies you would use to address this gap.
Yeah, when I was talking to the city manager, Jeff Fron about this, yeah, he explained to me how this was work, but the good news is he find out, like, he told me that the city is already being prepared to like for this because for this, just in case it happened in the future. But I think that our city, Iowa City, among Iowa cities is in a good shape for that. And they have, because they have really smart budgeting and I will really continue work with them so we can like support this. But I think we are in a good shape, like among any other cities in Iowa cities, according to our city manager.
Thanks. Angela?
I think this is a great time to reexamine allowing for more and denser growth as we increase our tax base. With the development of denser properties in our community, I think we're able to draw on that and to create revenue in our community or for our city and our community to balance the loss of and lack of funding from the state as we continue forward. And I know that our community has done a lot to kind of create a savings or a emergency fund for our community, but I don't think we need to draw and deplete that if we are able to create different revenue sources in Iowa City to help make up for what we're going to lose.
Thanks. Kingsley?
Yes, so that's a tough question. You know, it's already been discussed and I'm going to reiterate, you know, the emergency fund has something that we talk about not only during our budgeting process, but just in general, as far as making sure that we have that emergency fund available. Keeping healthy reserve balances, I think, is also important as we move forward with, you know, whatever the state may think about in that particular vein or vehicle. You know, I'm going to go against something that I've thought of before because I have been somewhat disgruntled, I think is the word I'm going to use, with the state as far as how they're proceeding in these efforts. And so one of the things I think about is just continuing that lobbying, you know, how do we, how do we talk about the issues that we're facing in the backfill with other cities? How do we leverage our partnerships with the Metro Coalition and other city coalitions to ensure we're having a much larger Iowa conversation, not just necessarily an Iowa City conversation? I want to focus on sustained growth throughout Iowa City as another strategy to ensure that we're looking at it across the board and wanting to move forward in that particular way. And then I'm going to take my minute to kind of throw an idea out there. Thank you for letting me know that time. You know, how do we become an economic development incubator? We have an amazing amount of talent in this community. We have an amazing amount of resources in this community that is leveraged by the different things that happen, you know. ICAD does a wonderful job looking at kind of interstate commerce and really supporting businesses that had that macro level thinking around a lot of the business and things. But I would be very interested to see from a small business owner development standpoint, how we could leverage their ingenuity and their resources around this particular effort as well. How do we become a destination across the nation for women business owners? How do we become a destination across the nation for business owners for people of color? You know, that's the kind of out of the box thinking that I want to bring to my reelection campaign from a city council standpoint. And so I really want to move forward in that effort and I think it's really important that we think about that as we think about kind of the backfill that is coming, or I say the lack of backfill that is coming.
Thanks, Kingsley. Ryan?
This is a tough issue and after speaking with the city managers, you know, I've learned about how this, our city can generate revenue in a sort of emergency scenario. And a couple of options we have, which are both pretty regressive and I'd be, you know, a lot of conversation would have to take place before this would be implemented, would be a local option, sales tax or a utility tax, both of which fall more negatively on lower income folks in our community. So we'd really have to look at that as a last resort. But we're pretty capped on what we can do for revenue or property taxes. And I think this speaks to a much larger issue, is that as a city, we are losing our ability to have autonomy, to have local control over how we generate revenue and how we operate. And what is needed then is to look at the reasons why. So if Des Moines is actively legislating against communities like Iowa City, then we have to change Des Moines, that this is a much larger issue than Iowa City. And so I would be most interested in seeing a community effort, not only in Iowa City, but throughout the state, that is trying to take back power in Des Moines so that we have more agency over our decisions, over whether it's minimum wage, whether it's the way we generate revenue. And so we need to think large and think really down the road. So in this sort of scenario, we'd be playing, you know, a year with, waiting up until 2018 to try and change the composition. But I really want that composition changed and I think that by activating new and young people into the political process, by activating the grassroots and the people who have been a sort of disenfranchised and not included in our political process can really give us the capacity to change Des Moines and act as an Iowa City with the most potential and the greatest operating potential as well.
Thanks. Susan?
When the legislature passed the property tax reform in 2013, it was really anticipated, I think, by a lot of the cities in the state that the backfill would not last. So Iowa City began at that point in time generating larger, generating larger reserves in many of our funds and also creating a new emergency fund for this case, figuring that it would eventually come down. But what people have to understand is those reserves and that emergency fund, the only thing they are going to do for us is really to give us a soft landing, if you will, when that backfill goes away. Because those reserves will get eaten up and that emergency fund will get eaten up or we will have to increase our property tax levy, unless we do some other things. One of the best things that we can do is to continue to grow our tax base. People have talked about, you know, sustainable growth, incubator, economic development incubators. We're doing a lot of those things now, we need to continue to do more. When I talked about TIF, and I talked about this a little bit, one of the things, and I do see this as a major benefit of TIF, is, and I use this analogy with college students one night, is if you think about people with a 401K, you put money into that for years with the idea that you're going to pull a lot more money out of it for a long time. You can look at TIF like that 401K. We're taking taxpayer money and using it for 10 years maybe, 12 years maybe. And then we're doing that though, if we're doing it for large, well-built buildings, it'll be 50, 100-year buildings, we're going to increase our tax revenues for the next 40, 50, 80 years. So we're getting a lot more back. That doesn't mean we use it indiscriminately, but that certainly is a way of dealing with our property tax issues going forward. They need to be good buildings, we need to look at context, et cetera. But just the fact that they can help us in terms of our revenue stream down the road is very important.
This next one's going to start with Angela. Businesses can choose where to locate in Johnson County. How will you advocate to keep Iowa City competitive with its neighbors in terms of business attraction?
I think that we need to continue and kind of grow our incentive programs, whether it's with loans, forgivable loans and grants, to help diversify and increase and also retain the businesses that we have in our community. One of the, I think, issues that we face in Iowa City are, is the cost of opening business, especially in our downtown area. And if we can help incentivize, especially different types of retail, I know one of our focuses has been in soft goods retail downtown, that we can, sorry, kind of help diversify what we have available in our community. But it is important to stay competitive with our surrounding communities. I know that if we can help kind of change the way that we draw businesses, especially working with our university community, we have a great entrepreneurial program here. And if we can help kind of launch locally grown and developed businesses, that we can also help keep some of our younger workforce here. And that is something that we, as an entire community, need to work with or work together on to help continue our economic development.
Thanks. Kingsley?
I mean, it's Iowa City. Everyone wants to be here. You know, continuing with our economic development, that just kind of conversation I had about economic development incubator, you know, how do we make it, how do we increase incentivization? We did, you know, look at $25,000 of the last strategic plan window to really focus on communities of color and women as well, to ensure that we're thinking about it from that standpoint. You know, one of the things that I think is interesting, and I mentioned in the beginning kind of monologue or speech as well, is, you know, a lot of the legislative priorities that not only the Chamber has, but also the Downtown District focus on those key social initiatives. So I know I'm kind of, you know, walking the tight line as far as talking about social initiatives and business, but to me it's interlinked and it's basically, to me, it's symbiotic in a sense, you know? If you have an arts and culture scene that is amazing and diverse and fun and engaging, businesses will want to be here because that's what the people will be. If you have a city that is focused on social justice, racial equity, not only in its just language, but the practices that we preach, then people want to be here, businesses want to be here. You know, it's something that I think that we don't talk enough about how symbiotic that relationship is, that we have to ensure we're having those conversations, not only, again, just talking about it from a council standpoint, but putting plans in place, putting pen to paper, putting, you know, finger to iPad, to really discuss how we can move forward in this particular way. And I think that when we focus on those social issues especially, we'll see, well, and coupled with those other incentives that we've talked about and as been mentioned before, we'll see that change. And I think that Iowa City can be that and I think that other communities across the country, Austin, Boulder, Seattle, have done that and have seen the growth because of it.
Thanks. Ryan?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Businesses can choose where to locate in the Johnson County region. How will you advocate to keep Iowa City competitive with its neighbors in terms of business attraction?
So I think some of this comes from maintaining the strong financial base that Iowa City has, and that means maintaining our AAA bond rating and working with our city staff, our financial managers, to ensure that we have a really, really strong sort of financial base that businesses can invest in. But I think it's also takes what Kingsley had announced about achieving this social justice, about encouraging more arts. And if we are to attract new businesses to the area, we have to be a place that is really inclusive for all people. That means that we're a safe, a safe community for all folks, that we are really bringing in talent and community events that are really encouraging all folks in the community to turn out. And so it's financial, it's cultural, it's also leveraging our existing relationships with Kirkwood Community College, with the University of Iowa. Because I think as we operate in this community, there seem to be two bubbles, two worlds between the city and the university. And I think that by engaging in more intentional relationships around what new business startups look like, how we can incubate businesses from the minds and talent that we graduated at the University of Iowa, so that we are retaining their talent, what they've learned while they're in Iowa City and expanding the classroom to the community like what's being done with Dave Gould in the Green Room. It's really fascinating to see this sort of intersectionality between the university and the city to accomplish some sort of greater community identity. And so I think we need to leverage those relationships, maintain strong financials and be really innovative when it comes to our cultural scene.
Thanks. Susan?
I think this is an interesting question because it also depends upon what kinds of businesses you're talking about in answering this question. We do a lot in terms of, you know, ICAD has been doing a lot with incubator work, we've had our collab, we've got Merge space now, as Ryan was talking about, people that are just graduating. But you also see a lot of those businesses, particularly as they grow and develop, going out to the Oakdale Campus in Coralville, okay, which the university owns. So it's not, it's not quite that simple. You look at a plumbing company, are they really interested in their location based upon some of the things that people have just talked about or is it more, what are the regulations? How easy is it to get property rezoned if they need to do that? So it really depends on the kind of business. We have a lot of businesses, particularly who are hiring the young, highly skilled individuals coming out of the university, say, doing all that computer programming. They want to be downtown. That's where their employees want to be. want to be downtown. That's where doing things like making sure that we have plenty of Class A office space available is really important, because the businesses want to be downtown, those individuals that work for those businesses want to be downtown. So to encourage them to invest here means also having housing for their employees. So it's not just about the business itself, it's about what can we do for their employees and making this a vibrant community. So again, the things we're already doing and continue to do in investing in the Engler, in summer, the arts, and all the other arts and culture things that we do. But we also have to look at kind of the harder issues, if you will, in terms of zoning and regulation that keeps those businesses or attracts those businesses to be here, that don't necessarily have to be here, if you will, because of their employees or because of the business that they, service that they provide.
Thanks, Susan. Maza here?
Yes, you know, we really need, we do have already a lot of good businesses in this community who are setting the standard high for the rest of the business in this community. But to attract more businesses, actually to attract more good businesses who really gonna like paying a livable wage and, you know, we need to have economic justice in this community. We need to have social justice in this community. We need to have affordable housing, good transportation, so those businesses can benefit when they come here. By just talking to a lot of people in the community, we do have people here who would like, already live in this community, and they would love to open a business in this community. We don't need to attract businesses from our side. We have people here, we need to give them the chance to open their own businesses by any kind of like help from the city. Like now, we have Kmart already gone. That's beautiful space to do like something on it. I always think like employees own businesses, say, where like people will benefit from like the pay that they get for like high minimum wage, you know, and those kind of things. I guess we need to work more to encourage our people who live here, who cannot rent on the downtown, so we can have businesses around the neighborhood in the, like across the town, not only on the downtown, because it's really expensive for a lot of people right now to open business. Thank you.
Thanks. So this next question is going to start with Kingsley. I also just want to let everyone know that we're probably going to have one or two more questions and then closing statements. The remainder of the time, we're going to let the candidates come join you out there, so you can mingle and get to know them a little better in a more personal way. So just keep that in mind. So Kingsley, the next question is, how do you plan to include students, people of color, and low-income folks in your priorities? People who are often forgotten?
So I go back to that plan for communication, because one of the strategic planning priorities we did have is kind of focused on how we can bring forth and just talk to the community in different ways about what's happening from a council perspective. We've done that through, you know, our listening posts. We've done that through various events that we have attended. And I would say our council has done a really good job from that standpoint, but there's always a need to do better. You know, one of the things I've been thinking about, especially as I've been campaigning, and you hear those new ideas, you talk to different folks, you meet them at their door when you're door knocking, is really ensuring that we're doing that. We're meeting people at the door. We're meeting people where they are. And so one of the things that I've had the opportunity to do, and I'll kind of break this down based on the question you asked me, is when we're talking about students, I've met them, you know, in their, in their classrooms, at their homes, at the, at the different centers that each of the different student organizations have, to hear from them. And so thinking about, when we go through our strategic plan, being deliberate and mindful and planful of making sure that we think about how we, as counselors, can get out more. It doesn't necessarily have to be our entire council. Maybe it has to be one or two or three representatives, but go to those places and go to their meetings. Go to the UISG meeting. I know we have a rep. Go to the, I just forgot the name of the Graduate Professional Student Organization, the acronym for it, but go to those meetings. Many meetings that I attend, the Black Forces Project meeting is a meeting that I attend consistently. There's other community meetings that happen during the day. You can talk about the CWJ Allies meeting, that I think I've only been able to attend one, but that's being attended by all their council members as well. And so looking at how we get out and provide that input from the community standpoint and get a chance to meet them where they are, I think is going to be very important as we move this conversation forward.
Thanks, Kingsley. Ryan?
I think that it's really crucial to include all voices at the city council level, and that means really getting out to where people are, like Kingsley had mentioned. And I think that engaging our student population is really important, because they do represent a large chunk of our population, a large chunk of our economy, and they are not currently provided a vote on city council. And I think that it's crucial that that happened. But we have to be really intentional about where we are and who we are engaging. And I think that, you know, we really need to expand the dialogue to those who have been outside of it. And that means going to neighborhoods that have been often either neglected economically or personally, not visited, with folks kind of on the margins, who are not put at the front of our discussions and our conversations. So this means, like what I have done with the volunteering with the Center for Worker Justice, and being where people are, whether they're immigrants, refugees, working people, going to labor unions, going to business councils, it's going to really require an active city council to meet the people where they are at. And so I've been happy to meet with student organizations, with student leaders, and students who are concerned about, you know, how much they are spending to live here. Their cost of living is very high, and they've often spoken of food insecurity, which a lot of these same issues that students are bringing up are reflected in other segments of our community, like elderly folks, like working-class people who are struggling to make ends meet. So I think the more that we bring more voices that have not been represented at council to our decision-making table, the better we are going to become as a more cohesive and united community.
Thanks. Susan?
I think one of the best things about talking to as many people in the community as you can is getting new and different ideas. And I think we all tend to make better decisions and more informed decisions with the more input we can have. I think when you look at, you know, a council of seven and the community that we have with as many diverse populations as we have within the community, it is a matter of trying to find a little maybe more coordinated way of doing that from the council level. One of the things we've started doing is the listening post. We do those at least quarterly, sometimes every other month. We have a neighborhood council that we get together with. We have the student liaison, which I think has been an incredibly effective position with an appointee from UISG, of somebody who really is at those meetings, getting that input from UISG, and really sitting here at our work sessions and advocating well for the students. And we've done a number of things in relation to that over the past few years with that input. So it's, I think it's a way of trying to coordinate some of those things. We have some people on the council that are retired. We have, you know, Kingsley and I and others, you know, work full-time. So while you may want to get out, you also have some limitations in terms of your time, of how much you do that. But if we coordinate it across the council, I think we can get even more of the input. I think we're doing a good job with that. Also with the city manager's roundtable, that came out of some results from the Ad Hoc Diversity Committee, of a way for people to sit down and really have that conversation out of the public eye, really be able to be honest and genuine with each other about the issues that are going on in the community, and how can we be creative about problem solving. And I think those are the kinds of things that we need to continue.
Thanks. Maza here?
You know, as a just founder of the Center for Worker Justice, we've been doing this. We've been bringing people from different backgrounds together to solve a lot of problems in this community. We have really proven our ability to doing that. We brought people together to raise them in a way across Johnson County to 10-10. We brought people together to create new programs like the Community ID and the Community ID on Iowa Global Food Project. We brought people together to like make, you know, bridges between developer and, you know, and residents. We've been doing this. I know their issues. I know their concern. I feel what they feel. And I think I can reach out to them whenever we want to reach out to them. And I have a lot of experience in this. We, like through my work on the police, community review board, community police review board, was like also my work with the Sudanese community, as a member of the Sudanese Community Association. I know also the issues and how we can bring them together. We did, you know, bring people together, we changed local policy and to better, and we improve also equity and inclusion at the school district. We promote dignity and fair treatment in the workplace. We recovered 60,000 of Ambeige for wake staff. We done a lot by bringing people, most of the people who affected at the bill who've been disconnected from policy discussion. We've been doing this, and as a city council, I will continue doing this. Thank you.
Thanks. Angela?
I think that our city council members currently do a lot to reach out to various, what you called, I think, forgotten community members. I know that they host listening posts in outlying neighborhoods, which I think are great. It gives people who don't have the accessibility to get here, if our buses stop running, to give their input at a council meeting. And I think that if we can kind of coordinate those and help promote them better, so that people in those communities know about the events, that that would help. And a lot of it has to do with, I think, better utilizing kind of a social media platforms or better electronic platforms, which that's something else that I think our city staff and leaders could coordinate better in creating accessibility via just an app or texting platform, so that people can provide input if they need without having to find their way down here, and then engaging our student populations. I know we've done a lot of work in engaging our undergraduate student population, which is fantastic. But in the past couple months, as the GPSC, that's the Graduate Student Government, has gotten better organized and created better leadership for themselves. They represent, I think, almost 10,000 people in their population of graduate students, but they want a voice in our community also. And I don't know that they necessarily can be like voting members of our council, but I think that they should have a voice, and it might not be appropriate to do it during council meetings, but maybe in off weeks, creating accessibility to our city council and city leaders for both of our student populations. It's important. Thanks.
Thanks. So in order to make sure we have time for everyone to talk and be respectful of the city staff that are here, I think we're going to start with closing statements, and this starts with Ryan.
I'm really humbled to be able to be up here today and to be joined by all of you, and to be up here with such incredible folks who are running for a very important part of our community. And, you know, I really want to, in this campaign, raise issues that I think that matter, I think that is getting communicated to me from folks in the community that are important, and that, you know, we are all listening to folks who have lived on the margins in our community, and their voices and concerns are elevated. You know, I've had pretty humble beginnings, growing up in a working-class family in the Detroit area, and I, through my experience in AmeriCorps as doing energy efficiency work, as a wildland firefighter, and as tutor and a mentor in a public school, I think that I bring the sort of experience that is needed at the city council level, to communicate the needs of the working class, to communicate the needs of those kind of left out of our community dialogue, and that we open up city hall to new and young people who have been outside of our political process. Because I'm talking about a big vision, a big progressive vision for Iowa City and this state and this world, really, because I think that we have the tools in this community to build something great and worth investing in. And that, you know, if we are really to tackle issues like climate change, we need to be really intentional about it, bring all the stakeholders in, and work together towards common sense solutions. And I want to be that bridge builder. I want to make Iowa City a great community for all people, because it's a future that I hope for and that we all deserve to be part of, a more just, more equitable, and more sustainable future for all people. So thank you for having me here tonight.
Thanks. Let's try and hold applause until the end, I swear. We'll leave time for everyone. Susan?
Thank you, Ryan. Again, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this and everybody who's here tonight. As I said, I've been a longtime resident of Iowa City. You know, we can talk about backgrounds. I came from a dairy farm in Vermont, working-class family, so I've experienced that. Probably one of the most interesting, you sometimes have memories that, you know, never go away, something that happened that made a real big impression on you. I remember one semester when I came back to school at the University of Iowa after Christmas break, spent a month eating ramen noodles. Nothing but ramen noodles, because I had no money to buy any food besides ramen noodles. So I've experienced that. Is that where I live today? No. I worked hard. I had that opportunity. I got an undergraduate degree in biomedical engineering. I got my master's in industrial engineering. I taught at Kirkwood Community College for 18 years. I'm now a financial planner. Have I had opportunities? Yes, I have been blessed with opportunities. I have worked my tail off to take advantage of those opportunities. My husband is sitting in the audience. He's African-American. We have raised four children in this community. I have an idea what the racial issues are. Do I live it every day? No. I go out every day with my white privilege. I understand that. But has my husband and my children had those issues and had to deal with those acts of racism, et cetera, in this society? Yes. So I understand that. So, you know, what I come down to really, and I have a lot of respect for Ryan for having, you know, having the guts to come out and do this as a 24-year-old undergrad. But to me, what it also comes down to is the experience and the connections within this community. You know, last fall, I saw a strategic opportunity. We had an issue with a number of minority applicants highly placed on our list for hiring for the police department, suggested to the city manager that instead of hiring two for the openings that we had, we hire four. He brought that to city council. They agreed. We end up with three African-American males added to our police force. This has been a challenge for decades to increase the diversity. Those are the kinds of things, with the connections I have in the community, I talked about the access center, that I have the opportunity to continue doing, and I hope I'll be able to. Thank you.
Thanks. Maza here?
Yeah, I just would like to thank all the audience who come here today, and thank Ryan as well, and our timekeepers too. You know, this, in many ways, this election perhaps, like many elections, comes an important crossroad for our city and our nation. I think cities must take the lead on many issues now. I am excited to be part of this historical moment, to keep our, by all of Iowa City, moving forward for everyone in this community, especially the people who stood outside the American. You know, and also to open the door for the council chamber for more solutions and ideas for the challenge that facing our city, so we can give everyone a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thanks.
And vote for me.
Hi. I think this might be the most like nerve-wracking crowd that I've sat in front of. I think I have met or have attended several meetings that you all have been at. I know we have a lot of our city leadership here. So I have to apologize. I have seriously stumbled through tonight. But I think the main reason I decided to make the move to run for city council is that I grew up in Iowa City, never thinking that there were that many issues. We live in a really great community that has become more diverse as I've gotten older. And as I've gotten older and more involved in our community, I have learned about a lot of the issues that I think that our city leadership has always addressed, but that we need to continue to address. And that, for me, one of the biggest things, though I respect everyone that's in our city leadership positions, I do think that there are different voices that need representation at the table. I think people sitting up here are good vision of what I think our city council should look like in the future. But as our community has become diverse, as we work on keeping younger people in our community, I think we need those people, and I'm one of those people, represented on our city council. people, represented on our city council. I don't think growing up here makes me any more qualified, but I do know a lot of what the community has gone through in growing pains, what we need to work on, and honestly, I think that anyone who really is passionate about serving the community that they grew up in should be able to. And this might not be the most ideal way of doing it, but I do think that getting our voice out there, even just running for city council is really important, and the opportunity has allowed me to meet with a lot of new people in our community that I had never met in the last 28 years. Thanks.
Thanks. Kingsley?
We should be excited about the growth we're seeing. Other communities across Iowa, across the nation, aren't seeing this growth. That's something to, you know, hang our hats on, that's something to be excited about. But with that comes, we need to be smart, we need to be balanced, and we need to be intentional. One of the, I don't know what I was going to call it, but one of those mistakes I made in my, one of the previous questions, I can't remember exactly which one, Ryan, but I was going to go back to talking about time and just talking about how our business owners, you know, work a ton. Our community works a ton, and some of those business owners are our community members as well. We need a plan, we need to be clear, we need to be intentional. You know, many of you know me, and if you don't, you know, give me a call, shoot me a text, hit me up on Twitter, hit me up on Facebook. You know that I meet with people morning, day, night, I'm actually going to leave this meeting after we mingle, no cookies and juice, but hopefully we'll still mingle. I'm going to leave this meeting tonight and call constituents, call others, because there's still issues happening as we speak right now. That's what I'm about. I'm about collaborative leadership, I'm about a balanced approach, about addressing the issues that matter most to our community and having those conversations on an everyday, every-night basis. I care about this community, and you know, even with this cold weather that I still have not acclimated to, I care about this city. It's important, it's important that we put members on council that are dedicated, that are focused, and leading us forward in some uncertain times, in some very uncertain times, from a state level, from a national level, but even here locally in this community. You know, I need your help, not only to get elected, so please vote for me, but also to continue in this effort to really push forward in a new and innovative way when it comes to Iowa City. I think it's important, and I hope to have your support on November 7th or before. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So on behalf of the Iowa City Area Chamber of Commerce and our more than 800 member businesses, I'd like to thank you all for coming out today. I'd also like to thank the city of Iowa City for providing the space and for providing staff, excuse me, staff for this event. And lastly, I'd like to thank the candidates for coming out and gracing us with their presence. So make sure to stay around and talk to them. Let's give them all a round of applause.